Would everyone please rise for the flag salute? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you please remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. We have two moments of silence this evening. The first moment of silence is for Mr. Harvey Martin Sutton. Mr. Sutton, the husband of Karen Sutton, a very respected instructor at Carter Elementary School and whose previous assignments included Maple Hill and Truman Moon. Mr. Sutton was known as an extremely hard worker. He retired as territory manager for the Energy Kinetics and owned an oil company, was co-owner of an oil company from 1972 to 1981, State Line Oil. Mr. Sutton also served his country during the Vietnam War, member of the United States Air Force. Family was all-important for Mr. Sutton. He enjoyed spending time with them in a variety of activities. If I may quote, "Harvey felt blessed to have the greatest gift of all: love of the family." The second moment of silence this evening is for Janet Pascalon. Ms. Pascalon served as speech pathologist for this district for over 20 years. She was known as an extremely conscientious person. Anytime you asked Janet to serve on a committee, she was there. I worked with Janet on a number of committees. It was always a pleasure to work with her. Not a clock watcher, she would spend whatever time was necessary to help students. She was also known for her generosity around the community. When you first met Janet, you felt like you knew her for many, many years. And finally, I'd be remiss if I did not offer a moment of silence for those individuals killed in the Manchester bombing and in the Philippines by, as the President said, whether you agree with him or not, these low-life animals. So, please remember everyone in your thoughts or prayers. Thank you so much. Now, we're altering the agenda this evening because we may, we just have a quorum right now and one of our members has to leave early. And please, if you have not been to a board meeting, remember that we have the documentation for about two weeks for any of these items and we are able to ask any questions of the administration. And in addition to that, we have our executive sessions where we also discuss items. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Excuse me, John, we need the mission statement.
Okay, mission statement. I'm sorry, Mr. Tobiasin, go ahead.
We strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners and to be competitive, productive members of society.
May I have a roll call, please? Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Roll call.
Mr. Crescenzo, Mr. Estrada, Mrs. Knapp?
Here.
Mr. McElroy, Mr. Perrino?
Here.
Mr. Pierre, Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Pastor Williams?
Here.
Okay, now we'll go back to our approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Before we do, I'd like to make a correction amendment to 24A. Under Karen Marconi, the title is not SLO, it's SWD. Students with Disabilities.
And the SWD stands for Students with Disabilities.
Right.
Thank you so much. So now we'll have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Mrs. Knapp, second. Mr. Tobiasin. All those in approval?
Aye.
Anyone not approving the agenda? Passes five zero. Thank you. Approval of the regular minutes, May 2017?
Some move.
Mrs. Knapp, thank you. Second. Who is the second on that?
Paula.
Mrs. Blumenau? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Opportunities to address the board? Remember, you have four minutes. We do not dialogue. Any takers this evening? Going once, twice, gone. That's my old auctioneer. School, okay. All right, any letters? Mrs. Clark, no letters this evening, all right. Personnel action items? Any objection to doing all the action items together?
No.
Any objections? All right, may I have an approval for personnel memorandum 24A, 24B, 24C, 24D, and 24E?
Some move.
Okay, that was Ms. Tobiasin and Bishop Williams. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Well, we have another opportunity to address the board. Any takers? I see Mr. Dean in the audience, who did a nice job last night with the National Junior Honor Society. Any takers? I see now, I see Mr. Gomez in the audience. You can come right up here. Kevin, sit down right down there, at the end of the table. Mrs. Zuck's in the audience? You can come up here, too. Apologize for not making, for not extending the invitation beforehand. Right up there and sit down. Okay, let's go to the action items. Approval of financial memorandum 25?
Some move.
Mrs. Knapp? Second. Bishop Williams? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Approval of special service memorandum?
Some move.
Twenty-three? Mrs. Knapp, and that was Mrs. Blumenau? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Five zero. Approval of change orders?
Second.
Bishop Williams? Mrs. Knapp? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. And again, we have all these beforehand, all this documentation. Approval of service contracts?
Some move.
That was sort of a tie, I think, Mrs.?
He can have it, I'm okay.
All right, Bishop Williams? And Mrs. Knapp? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Paula? Any discussion? Okay, five zero. Approval of memo of understand, of agreement with Middletown School Nurses Association?
Second.
Mrs. Knapp?
Rose.
And Mrs. Tobiasin? Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Approval of member, memo of agreement with Middletown Food Service Workers Unit?
Some move.
Okay, that was Mrs. Knapp?
Tobiasin.
Mrs. Tobiasin and Mrs. Blumenau? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Board of Election Workers Increase, which we discussed, which was discussed again?
Second.
Bishop Williams? Mrs. Knapp? Any further discussion?
No, just that, Mr. Perrino, I'm still in favor of looking at having just one central place for elections, that's all.
We can ask the administration to do this and give us a report on this. I want to say myself, this, I believe this, the Board of Election Workers Increase was well-deserved because they do work many, many long hours at the polls. So, let's see, did we have a?
Did we vote on that, Karen? We got a vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Action on Student Disciplinary Appeal, which?
You want to read that?
Okay, go ahead.
Resolve that the Board of Education uphold the superintendent's decision made at the superintendent's disciplinary hearing regarding student number 0230737, following consideration by the Board of Education of the appeal made by the parent.
This was discussed in the executive session? All those in favor in supporting the move? Map a motion?
Did we motion it? No.
All those in favor?
Rose motioned it, and I seconded it.
Okay. Mrs. Tobiasin and Ms. Knapp? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Committee reports, and why don't we start the committee reports with Mrs. Blumenau, the policy committee? Could we do that?
You want to just see if there's any reports at all?
Okay, are there any, are there any reports?
Yeah, we'll just do the policies.
Okay.
I don't have any, do you?
Any questions on policy? All right. Motion to waive the?
There again, the policies have all been reviewed by both the administration and the Board of Education on appropriate committees, and have gone through a lengthy process for the last couple of months in this review, and now they're sitting before the board for a vote.
And I know the people in the policy committee spend many, many hours on this. I know Mrs. Blumenau's done a tremendous job with this. So, let's have a motion to waive the first and second reading of policies.
Some move.
Mrs. Blumenau and Mrs. Tobiasin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, five zero. Let's have a motion to approve the policies recommended by everyone?
Audit.
Audit?
Some move.
Mrs. Knapp? Bishop Williams? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Recognition, announcement, and community reports?
Can we waive that, Mr. Perrino, please? In light of the evening and just go to the tenure awards?
I don't have any problem with that. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, let's, we'll waive that. Now, this meeting is a very special meeting because we have with us this evening individuals from each of our buildings, staff members, who have earned tenure. And I say earn very carefully because it's not an easy process, and we're going to recognize them tonight. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Delmorel, our superintendent instruction, who has a very special?
Can I ask the board to stand on podium so we can greet those that are being recognized?
Good evening, and as Mr. Perrino mentioned just a moment ago, this is a very special celebratory evening for 24 instructional leaders inside the building, inside the classrooms, and working with children, and that's paramount to what our task is, as well as three administrators this evening. Granting tenure is a milestone in an educator's career. There's no question about that. Certainly, the first one is being hired, and the next one receiving tenure. It is a sense of accomplishment and achievement and not taken lightly by any, by any means. I'd like to begin this evening by calling up to the microphone the dean at Twin Towers along with Mr. Dean? To recognize his dean, Ms. Camila Doma, for tenure this evening. Mr. Dean? Thank you, Mr. Delmorel. Mrs. Adoma is the dean of students at Twin Towers Middle School. In my 20 years of working in Middletown, I've yet to meet another educator who's more compassionate of and has a deeper understanding for the children we serve each and every day. Our Middletown School community is truly blessed to have Mrs. Adoma as a member. Congratulations, Camille. Truly a pleasure, this evening, to recognize all of these individuals working with our children. Especially a pleasure and very proud for me to call the next person, instructional leader, Ms. Karen Marconi, for our Students with Disabilities. Ms. Marconi, would you like to come up, please? For grades K through five. Karen? Karen, prior to arriving at Middletown, was a regional associate consultant for the State Education Department in the area of Students with Disabilities. Upon her arrival, she immediately started to work very closely with our instructional staff to ensure that we all are compliant with federal and state guidelines, as well as improving student achievement by this group of students. She's been a valuable resource to teachers, constantly striving and seeking ways to help teachers improve their instructional practice. We are very truly blessed to have someone work so with confidence and diligence. This year, she had a special assignment in reopening the Truman Moon School as an annex to the Maple Hill Elementary School for students with disabilities coming back from regional overseas placements and other placements that students were in previous years. We're very happy to know that, working with the teachers there so intently, all of the students have demonstrated a higher achievement performance level this year than in their previous placements. She's truly an asset to our community. Thank you. The next administrator I'd like to recognize for tenure this evening is Mr. Dominic Radoia. Dominic? Please come to the podium, please. Although Dominic actually received tenure a few board meetings ago, we wanted to recognize him on this celebratory evening. Dominic's been with the school district for 11 years. In 2006, he came to us from across the river, from Brewster, Central School District, as an elementary assistant, no, excuse me, middle school assistant principal at Monhegan Middle School. In the year 2009, he became the principal of Maple Hill Elementary School, and just recently, in 2015, became the principal of Monhegan Middle School. In those 11 years, regardless of what assignment he had and what school he was working with, it was demonstrated that students' achievement improved each and every year. He's truly a child-centered administrator and works very collaboratively with staff to achieve common goals. It is our pleasure to have him as an administrator in our school district as he strives each year to make it a better place for kids to learn. Thank you, Dominic. Now for our instructional staff. I'm going to call in the order that the Board of Education agenda indicated where the teachers are working with. So, we first start with the high schools, so we're going to ask Mrs. Sorrentino and her administrative team to come up with all of the teachers up here at one time to be recognized as they received tenure moments ago.
Thank you again, Mr. Araki. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Delmorel, Dr. Eastwood, members of the board. It gives me great honor and pleasure to recognize, as you can see, a pretty large team tonight. I'd like to first thank my administrative team for their contributions, as it is definitely a team effort. The first person we're recognizing tonight is Ms. Kaylee Orsichak. She, please come on up, Kaylee. Kaylee is one of our art teachers at the high school. She's amazing. She's been recognized and published. Her feedback that she gives to her students enriches them each and every day. She is engaging, and she really knows how to engage the faculty at the opening faculty meetings. She works very closely with Mr. Whitaker as well, who I thank for all of his efforts and hard work. Congratulations, Kaylee. The next educator receiving tenure with us tonight is Ms. Gina Farantelli. Ms. Farantelli teaches ninth grade English with us. She is truly a delight. Her classes are organized and personalized, truly personalized. She has been working toward working in small groups throughout the year. Her gift for working with the students to enrich their writing is unbelievable. I'm very excited to have her on our staff. Thank you, Gina, and congratulations. I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Connell, who will speak briefly.
Good evening, Middletown community. The next teacher I'd like to honor would be Mr. John Picora. Mr. Picora is one of our technology teachers. Mr. Picora has a passion of bringing the industry into the classroom. He creates opportunities for students to make real-life connections, and has such great discussions, and it's just such an exciting time to watch students really explore what industry standards feel and really experience, how they can apply themselves to really innovate in this world. So, Mr. Picora has created what we called in our technology department, as he transitioned from the middle school, he's really come into the high school and really became part of the team, and is a very important part of the team, and developed what we call what we have in our technology department is a really strong family, and Mr. Picora is a very important part of that. So, congratulations, Mr. Picora. The next teacher I'd like to honor would be Ms. Elarica. Ms. Elarica is our technology chair department, the chair for our technology department, and she's, she's what we consider a pioneer. What she does every day in the classroom is exciting. What she does for a student to really make technology feel real is extremely important. But she's also an advocate for female in technology, and she's such a great example for that, and that's one of her major passions. She supports her students day in and day out, but she's extremely diligent in also supporting and advocating for other teachers in the building. She's such a great team player, and she's such an important part of the technology family. Congratulations. The next teacher we'll honor will be Mrs. Rosenschein. Mrs. Rosenschein is our earth science teacher, and Mrs. Rosenschein believes in inviting a student voice into the classroom. It's very often that students can shy away from science or sometimes will not want to share content, would not want to be part of exploring, but what she does is always, always demand the student's voice, finding ways to get them into the classroom, finding to get excited about science. She is a pioneer because she sells science to these students every day and allow them to really make contributions that's not only valuable for themselves, but help to educate and inform their peers. Mrs. Rosenschein is an important part of our science team. She not only, she not only create that environment within our classroom, but among the other teachers and in the science department, she is invaluable in building the relationship and making, making really great connections among the teachers. I am honored, and I'm sure we're truly blessed to have Mrs. Rosenschein as part of our science team. Congratulations. Next teacher we'll honor would be Ms. Marcine Cologne. And Ms. Marcine Cologne is a special education science teacher. Ms. Marcine Cologne believes in advocating consistently, not only for students with disability, but for all students. She's constantly designing activities, working with students, implementing small groups, taking risks consistently, but anything to get students engaged, to really let them learn the things that we are about and what science is about. Ms. Cologne has? Ms. Cologne has really spent a lot of time being a part of our district's initiatives and has spent time really trying to make those things real in her classroom and making, creating just new, real opportunities for students to learn. I'm very honored to have her as in the science department, but also just a voice for students with needs.
At this time, we'd like to call Mr. Radoia and the teachers to be recognized for tenure this evening. Mr. Radoia at Monhegan Middle School.
Thank you and congratulations to everybody this evening. I'm lucky enough to introduce you tonight to two very dynamic budding superstars that we are extremely lucky enough to have at Monhegan Middle School. First, I have Mr. Philip Stewart. Mr. Philip Stewart is a special education mathematics teacher at Monhegan. He is one that has grasped onto all our district initiatives, such as MathWorks and Blended Learning, and implemented them in his room. He also teaches in all of our after-school programs, coaches JV girls' basketball and modified volleyball. So one of the great things about Mr. Stewart is not only is he doing great things inside his classroom, he's working with kids after school. When he's not coaching and when he's not working in an after-school program, he sits in the library after school, inviting kids to come in, whether they're his or not, to sit down for extra help in mathematics. Mr. Stewart's all about kids, and we love having him. Next, we have Ms. Michelle Wackowski. She's a seventh grade social studies teacher at Monhegan, and one of the great things about her is that although she's only been there for three years, she has taken on such a leadership role. She can't take on enough responsibility. Last year, our subject matter leader for social studies was out for a portion of the year, and she stepped up and took on a lot of the responsibilities that that person would normally have. She's also taken on other leadership roles, like summer curriculum writing for social studies. She's flipped her classroom. She works on our building inquiry team and our school improvement team. So any opportunity she gets to take on a leadership role, she has grasped that. In addition, again, just like Phil, to working during the day with our kids, she takes every opportunity to be there for our kids at night and our night events. Last night, for example, she came to our band and orchestra concert, a little frantic because she had worked all day and then gone to pre-Kena for three hours. So she was a few minutes late to the concert, but she was there for our kids despite the fact that she works all day and is preparing for upcoming nuptials. So again, all about students, Michelle. What a great job.
I'm going to ask Mr. Dean and his administrative team to come up once again, but this time to recognize the staff being tenured at Twin Towers Middle School.
Thank you again, Mr. Delmore. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight for tenure, Ms. Taylor Lyons. And, you know, we are all here because we were successful in school and we're being successful in life. And some children have a more challenging road to success, and they need a little extra time, sometimes a pat on the back, a different explanation, and sometimes a very gentle kick in the butt. And Taylor is there to do that for them. And Taylor, I happen to have on very good authority, I know, that when you're far away from Middletown, you speak with caring and kindness about your kids. Well, Taylor, your kids are most fortunate to have you as a teacher and to help them be successful and put them on the path to one day be sitting with us. My pleasure to introduce Mr. Kyle Roddy. You know, it's one thing in life to have an interest in history and an interest in social studies. It's truly something special to be able to transfer that into the minds and hearts of 13- and 14-year-old little knotheds running around in middle school each day. But Mr. Roddy does that, and he's able to spark in them the interest and desire to read a little more, to ask really good questions, and to carry that interest and passion that he has into their lives. He's a pretty good mayor of that little village to the south of us, but he's an outstanding educator here in Middletown.
I hope that Mr. Roddy is willing to share a little more than Legos with us. And now for our elementary schools. First, we'd like to invite Mrs. Creedon at Maple Hill Elementary and our teachers that received tenure this evening.
What a team I get to present tenure to tonight. It's a very exciting night for us at Maple Hill, but most especially for this group of five strong and talented ladies in front of you. Like I said, our team, our entire team at Maple Hill, teachers, administrators, everybody, is so incredibly proud and feels so blessed to have such talent contributing to our school experience each and every day. Before you tonight, I present math and literacy specialists, innovators, leaders, mentors, problem solvers, motivators, coaches, inspirational adults. They are absolutely dedicated to their profession. They arrive early, they stay late, and continually put their commitment to their craft, our team, our community, everything they put before us. It is with tremendous midi pride tonight that I ask you to join me in congratulating Vanessa Duddy, Krista Ann Delmore, Sarah Cavalier, Alexis Steinberg, and Adrian Gork on their tenure tonight. Congratulations, ladies. We are better together.
You know, this meeting is always special, but it's very special to me this evening because one of our recipients of tenure, Sarah Cavalier, I taught with her dad for over 30 years. Unfortunately, Tony is no longer with us, but I'm sure he's up there applauding.
Mrs. Short at Presidential Park Elementary. It's our pleasure to call all of your teachers and administrative team to the podium.
Some of us are a little height challenged, so we have to use the special box that's underneath the podium here, just so you know why we look so tall. Good evening, everybody. It is great pleasure that I'm here to recognize five outstanding educators. They've come to PPE three years ago from various places, and I can safely say that they are awesome, each and every one of them. They do a lot of different things for us, but mostly what they do for our children is help them learn and grow and feel safe in the process. So first up, we have Olivia Moffett. Olivia is a first-grade ELA teacher. She has taught midpoint, she's taught low transitional, and she's done it all with grace and eager to learn, and her classroom is a warm and inviting place. All righty, next we have Arienne Lake. Arienne actually came to us from the middle schools, and she made an awesome transition to helping our elementary students learn how to read, write, and think about reading in a different way, in a better way. I hate to say it, but I often see her sitting on the floor in classrooms. We've offered her a table, but she sometimes says no. She pushes in, and she works with a lot of different teachers, and she does it with such diligence, and she gets along with so many different people because she has to go into their classroom environment. She's very low-key, she's very intelligent, and she really knows her craft. Melissa Barbosa is an English as a second language teacher, and she has brought to us a depth of experience in how to take our English language learners and help them really understand how to speak English, read English, write English, and understand it. And she uses a variety of tools and visuals and so many different apps on her iPad, which she's always using during instruction to bring up something to help them understand and grow in their vocabulary and their knowledge. She's outstanding. Thank you. Congratulations, Melissa. Next, we have Kara Silverman. I have to say, I've known Kara a little bit longer, let's say, than three years, because Kara was a long-term sub for us, and right away, I saw that sparkle in her eye, that midi pride sparkle. You see what she's wearing tonight? I can't say enough about Kara in terms of midi pride, because that's truly the epitome of who she is. When she was looking for a home a couple of years back, where did she buy? Right here in Middletown, because she wanted to live and work in the same community. She's an outstanding fifth-grade ELA teacher who brings such drive and compassion to every single day that she comes. The children that are in her classroom are blessed to have her, and so are we. It's my great pleasure to introduce Alex Galliano. When Alex came to us, we had her working with second graders who were extremely challenging. They were in a special ed classroom 15-1, and I can tell you that there was a lot of children in that room that needed a calm and soothing presence, and they found that in Alex. Now, we've changed the grade levels for Alex a couple times, and she never blinked or batted an eye. She's able to be flexible, caring, and although she might not be in the biggest classroom at Presidential Park, she certainly has filled that environment with visuals, manipulatives, and everything that she possibly can to accommodate those learners that need that extra push. Congratulations, Alex.
Okay. And hold the anchor this evening is William A. Carter School with Ms. Kathleen Jensen and her administrative team with the teachers being recognized for tenure this evening.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pride and pleasure to be here with my administrative team tonight to present to you our candidates for tenure. I first present Ms. Anna Belitowsky that I have the pleasure of sharing with Ms. Linda Broad. I would be remiss to not explain to you Ms. Belitowsky's background that began in Krakow, Poland. Ms. Belitowsky began her education in Krakow, Poland, where she met her husband, and they came to the States together, where Ms. Belitowsky became an ENL student herself, where she knew no English when she arrived in the States. Through that experience, she had a passion for teaching ENL, got her own degree, and I've had the privilege of witnessing her teaching ENL students with compassion and caring. She not only teaches individualized lessons to them, but truly makes a personalized connection with them, and it's with great pleasure that I recognize her for tenure tonight. Thank you, Anna. I next present to you Ms. Jen Mathias, who wanted so much to work in Middletown as she was applying. She worked as a teaching assistant. She then was hired in 2014 and 15 at Maple Hill to implement literacy in the library. She then was transferred to Carter, and I've witnessed her have the ability to connect literacy to skills in a very vibrant way, connecting vocabulary and life skills, and it's such a pleasure to have her at Carter. Thank you, Jen. The next two AIS teachers I have the privilege of sharing with Ms. Liz Blasser, or Bowler, I'm sorry. Ms. Donnie, you came to us with 22 years of experience in law, which explains her amazing ability to connect with students in text, to bring text alive for students through vocabulary, discussion, text-based evidence, and she makes magic come alive for students through literacy. It's a pleasure to have podium at Carter. Ms. Catherine Murphy is amazing. I constantly see Catherine moving about the building with her cart, with resources that are just unbelievable. I can constantly count on her to share those resources with everybody to not only enrich her students, but also the teachers around her. I've witnessed her with first graders, self-assessing and setting goals for themselves, and it's truly amazing to see.
As I mentioned to begin this portion of our meeting, the milestones that one might say an educator experiences, one being hired, the night you receive tenure, and one might arbitrarily say, the night you recognize retirement. And it is my pleasure this evening, in the audience, is an administrator who's been with this district for over 20 years, is retiring at the end of this month, who's been dedicated to the children in various capacity roles throughout her career here. And I'd like just for Mrs. Donna Napolitana to come up and just be recognized for her service to our school district.
I just want to thank everybody. 26 years is a long time. I've worn a lot of hats over 26 years and I'm very, very happy to pass my hat on to the next person and the next generation. It is an amazing experience to work for Middletown. Thank you.
This concludes this portion of the Board of Education meeting and within a few moments, the board will continue and then immediately following the adjournment of this meeting, we welcome all to the lobby for refreshments and celebration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This, again, as I said, a very special meeting. You are very special and great people here tonight. I'd like to make a motion at this time to adjourn the June 1st meeting. Any discussion? Motion approved, 5-0. Thank you. Let's party a little bit.